Welcome to the Minneapolis City Planning Commission meeting of October 14th, 2014. My name is Ted Tucker. I serve as President of the Planning Commission. Joining me today are Commissioners Cronzer, Bender, Brown, Lippke-Pier, Gisselman, and Slack. So we do have a quorum. Please, at this time, make sure that all electronic devices are silenced. The first item on our agenda is to approve the actions from the meeting of September 29, 2014. May I have a motion to approve those actions?
Someone.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Those actions are approved. Next item on our agenda is to approve the agenda. That is, sort out the agenda items printed on the blue sheets that you can find outside on the table. I'll go through the items one by one and find out if people want to talk about them, or we will put them on the consent agenda, or it's nothing to be continued today. So, item number one, Gavada Commons 601-629 Nicollet Mall. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item one? If not, we will put that on consent. Item number two is the Cedar Cultural Center Plaza, 416 Cedar Avenue. Again, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item number two? Seeing none, we will put that on consent as well. Item number three is Seward Cooperative Creamery, 2601 and 2609 East Franklin Avenue. Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation for item number three? That will go on consent as well. Item number four, Children's Museum Master Plan, 2502 10th Avenue South, 902 26th Street East, 2500 Chicago Avenue, 720 26th Street East, and 2525 Elliott Avenue South. That will be on consent unless someone wishes to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation. Seeing none, we will put that on consent as well. Item number five is Kraus Anderson Corporate Headquarters, 501 8th Street South, 502 9th Street South, and 811 5th Avenue South. We will have a presentation on that and discuss that. And item number six is Hampton Inn and Suites University. It's located at 2812 University Avenue Southeast. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify staff recommendation? Okay, I see two people want to discuss that. So we will put that on our agenda for discussion. So, we will have items five and six for discussion. Items one, two, three, and four will go on the consent agenda. No items to be continued or withdrawn. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Someone.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, that is our agenda. Committee of the whole, we did not have a meeting to report on. No action items. So, let's see, no items to be continued. At this time, I will open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. Again, items one, two, three, and four. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify staff recommendation for any of those four items? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. May I have a motion to approve staff recommendation for items one, two, three, and four?
Someone.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll take a vote. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, those items are approved per staff recommendation. Now, we move to the two items for discussion. We'll start with item number five. And we'll first hear staff report from Becca Farrar.
Good evening Commissioners. There are several properties that you just noted that are before you this evening. It's a full city block. It's bounded by Portland, 9th, 5th, and 8th. And the proposal before you is to construct a four-story office building with associated underground parking that would be approximately 80,000 square feet in size and then have 48 spaces underneath the building. There are four applications that are before you, but just wanting to step back because, of course, the last time you saw this, this was in somewhat of a different form. And one thing that I wanted to just sort of get out of the way right away, so there's no confusion, is that this parcel is not located in a historic district. However, it is adjacent. So you'll see, it's mentioned within the correspondence about Historic 9th, and what that is in reference to are the small area plans that are adopted for the area. So, oops, there it is. So this is the subject parcel. This is the boundaries of the 9th Street South Historic District. And again, this property is outside the boundary, so therefore not subject to those limitations. So, again, before I dive into the proposal that's in front of you this evening, what I'd like to do is just kind of touch base in what was the last application that you saw. And this project, of course, was scheduled for the 9/15 Planning Commission meeting. And just for reference purposes, there were several applications, of course, that were submitted for that. And the orientation of the building at that time was located at the corner of 5th and 8th. So this was the building located here. And the rest of the site was encumbered by a large surface parking lot. So because the property has not only downtown zoning B4N, it's located in the Downtown Parking Overlay District, there's, of course, many restrictions that apply to the re-establishment or establishment of surface parking lots in downtown areas. So there were a total of eight applications. It went to Committee of the Whole a couple of times, and we had pretty robust conversations about that particular project. And we did move ahead with a staff recommendation to deny it. Of course, that public hearing never transpired. The applicant did elect at that time to withdraw those applications. And so that happened just prior to the public meeting for that, which, again, was scheduled for September 15th. So, moving ahead to the application that's before you, it is a very similar building. And again, the orientation of the building before was located at the intersection of 8th and 5th, and now that has been adjusted. And so instead of having the principal entrance located along 8th, basically oriented north-south, it now is oriented east-west, facing 5th Avenue, and then being located along the 9th Street South elevation. So it's located at this corner. You'll notice in your packet, and obviously throughout the staff report, that we don't talk about the entitlement of a surface parking lot. And that is because there's no surface parking that's being applied for, along with a specific application that the applicant will be doing in the future, is applying for an interim use application, which is a temporary use permit that the city can approve for up to five years. The Planning Commission will not see that application. I think that's important to note. That would go through the Zoning and Planning Committee of the City Council, then to Full City Council for ratification. So you won't see the final design of this parking lot in any way, shape, or form what you have before you, however, is the subject building. So that leads me to the applications that are also before you this evening. And there are four of them. Some of these will look similar to the last proposal, but again, all of the references to establishment of a principal parking facility on the site that would serve the office building have been eliminated. So first, we still have the FAR variance from 2.0 to .73. That still applies in the specific circumstance. We also have a wall height variance request in the B4N. It's limited to 28 feet. The applicant is proposing to go up to 65 feet. We also have site plan review, again, for the aforementioned four-story, 80,000-square-foot building with the 48 spaces underground. And then lastly, we have a preliminary and final plat. And that's more or less to consolidate all the underlying platted lots into three developable parcels, one of which, of course, is covered by the subject building. So again, not to be repetitive, but it is Zone B4N, Downtown Parking Overlay District. It's obviously in downtown Minneapolis, which is, of course, an activity center and a growth center in the comp plan. You're probably familiar with the site currently. There's an existing two-story, approximately 40,000-square-foot building on the site. It was constructed in 1974, and then there's a large surface parking lot. 297 total spaces, 112 accessory, and then 185 that they commercially lease as part of that parking lot. As I mentioned before, these are the four applications that are before you. I do think it's important to just reiterate that the surface parking lot will be processed as an interim use application should the applicant elect to do that. And I believe that's the exact course that they're intending to follow, and they will try to get that entitled through the City Council for a period of five years. Many people will ask the question, then, what happens after the interim use permit? And essentially, if the city were to grant it for a period of up to five years, basically on that five-year sunset date, the parking is no longer allowed. And so they would either need to bring that back and have it legally entitled, bringing forth the very same applications that were part of the last application, or bringing forward a development proposal. But in essence, that parking would have to go away. So, moving ahead, there is a lot of correspondence in your packet, of course, from the Neighborhood Group, EPNI, or Elliott Park Neighborhood. And of course, when the old application was withdrawn, if you looked through the packet, you saw that basically what the neighborhood was most concerned about was the treatment of 9th. And so even when the building was located on the opposite corner, there was some skepticism about, you know, what is the development, what's going to be the fate of the development along 9th because of what the small area plan calls for. And the small area plan does call for residential-related uses, but it does call for smaller scale. So I think that's important to note as we move ahead here with discussion about this this evening. Of course, when that former application was withdrawn, after staff had recommended denial, and the applicant decided to pull it, and then come back with this proposal, you know, one of the things that we did discuss, me with the applicant specifically, was just working with the neighborhood on the design because of how much attention and concern the neighborhood had about the treatment of the building along 9th. And so my understanding, there have been some discussions, but I know representatives from the neighborhood are here this evening, and I prefer that they speak for themselves. I don't want to try and summarize their efforts to date. So I'll let them do that next. And also quickly, before I jump into the variance findings, as you know, we are recommending approval of all the applications with the exception of the sign variance, which we are recommending to deny on. And then there are some conditions of approval, a fairly lengthy list that are attached to the site plan review. But given where the building was, and obviously our recommendation the last time around, and given where it is now and the applications that are before you, I do think it's important to note that, you know, there was definitely some staff concern and a little bit of reluctance to support the proposal because, obviously, a lot of it depends upon whether there is future development on the remainder of the parcel. And the applicant is committed to doing that. We've been very clear, and I think the staff report is also clear, that the establishment of any permanent surface parking on this site will likely not be supported by staff. And it's inconsistent, of course, with the smaller area plan, the comp plan, et cetera. So I did want to make sure that we stated that this evening. And I do think that another point that is worthy of mentioning is that, you know, we do reference still in the staff report that we believe this is a bit of a suburban design building. And the fact that they were sort of able to flip it from one corner to another and to be able to move forward with the proposal is still a bit of a concern of ours. But nonetheless, let me just kind of skim quickly into variances, and then I'll be quiet so that you can hear from other folks. But first, just talking about the minimum FAR variance from 2.0 to .73. It is roughly, as you know, it's a full-block site. It's roughly 2.5 acres. And so essentially, in order to meet the minimum FAR requirement of 2.0, there would have to be approximately 220,000 square feet of development on this block. And again, we're looking at 80,000 square feet, even with the subdivision that they're proposing on the site, which more or less is this half of the block, again, 5th and 9th for reference, and then separating here. So this is two other separate blocks, and then theirs is basically the last, or about half a block, a little less than that. But even with the subdivision of this block, they still are not meeting that minimum FAR of 2.0. And it's about 1.67, and they would need to come up with an additional 15,000, approximately 500 square feet, in order to comply just on their lot. So, as I note in the findings, and again, I don't want to be too reiterative, but we, the circumstances are unique, given the fact that it is a full city block. But we do believe that they have been created by the property owner and the developer. We were able to support the variance in this specific situation, given the fact that they are looking at phased development. And we understand that at this point in time, they have been able to, unable to find a market partner to fully redevelop the site. They have stated that they will be pursuing that redevelopment in the next five to six years. And therefore, we do believe that the proposed development, because it does provide somewhat of an increase over the FAR over what currently exists on the property, which is, again, roughly 40,000 square feet, and the fact that they'll be pursuing the entitlement of the parking lot through the interim use application, it does provide the city, and I think this is probably the most key thing that I've said, is that the city can and will require a minimum level of development intensity on the remainder of the block. And further, the low-rise nature of the building is a bit more compatible with the surrounding properties on this end of the block as it was opposed to the north end of the block. Regarding the wall signs specifically, and again, I don't want to say too much. I know you've already read the staff report, but we do believe they have sufficient opportunities for signage on the building. We don't believe it's based on unique factors to the site, and it's not responsive to the residential and historical context character of the block face on which the sign is proposed. And we also feel that the sign code offers additional opportunities, for example, for projecting signs, et cetera, for northbound vehicles that are approaching the site on 5th coming off the freeway. I was going to say a bit more, but I think I'll just close there because otherwise I just feel like I'm repeating myself over and over again. But going to the staff report, again, when you look in the site plan review section, we talked a little bit about alternative compliance. We're looking for alternative compliance for a couple of different factors. I do want to point out building placement, given the fact that we've talked about this again and again with the last proposal, again, that was located at the opposite corner. The setbacks currently are very similar to what they were when the building was flipped and facing 8th. You have about a 3 to 17-foot setback from the property line that faces 5th. It's about a 4 to 5-foot setback along 9th. And then, of course, because of the fact that there will be some interim parking, if the applicant chooses to move forward with that, facing Portland in both 8th, you basically have a separation of about 218 feet from 8th and then 138 from Portland. Regarding the alternative compliance, and I'll just jump to that section instead of going through all the other different requirements to save a little bit of time here, the two first provisions that we're talking about, again, building placement, and then also talking about the area between the buildings and the lot line. Essentially, the site plan review standards prohibit having parking between the buildings and the lot line. Obviously, that would not be the case on at least two of those elevations. And so it is our position that there is sufficient influence to ensure future development on the remainder of the block. And so we're supporting those two provisions of alternative compliance. We are not, however, supporting the blank wall provision, or the window requirements, or even distribution-related requirements. And blank wall provisions, this is pretty standard for us, but it's on the north and the east elevations. We're saying it is practical to redesign the building to comply with that standard. And along, I'll probably shut this up, too. So the west elevation, of course, is that which faces 5th. The east elevation is basically the 9th Street elevation. And the areas that I have Xed out, I'm not sure if you can quite see those, and I know they probably didn't translate well in the materials you received, but these windows are all spandrel glass, so no views into or out of the building along 9th. And we have conditioned the approval so that all of these will be clear. It's in training rooms and other areas that we just don't feel that it's appropriate or reasonable to allow spandrel glass in those locations. And this is the east elevation of the building. This faces out towards Portland and the parking lot. And also, while I'm on the south elevation of the building, this is the subject sign that's approximately 65 feet in grade, from grade, excuse me. So I will close here. Again, we're recommending approval of the FAR variance from 2.0 to .73. We are denying, recommending denial on the wall sign height to 65 feet, and we're recommending approval on site plan review based on the nine conditions of approval. I think I'll start at number three, just to reiterate, but three, making sure that the actual glass that goes in the building has that transmitting level of .6 or higher so that we have views into and out of the building. I know that there was an issue before with the last application about mechanical equipment, so just to ensure that that large mechanical equipment on the roof is screened, it is conditioned that it meet that requirement of 535.70, which is the screening requirement. We are asking in this situation, too, and I know this is something that has come up on several occasions with the past proposal as well, but the entrance to the building is basically in that same area where we had, where it was located facing the parking lot on 8th. The only difference now is that it's facing the parking lot on 5th. And so that's in the specific location here. So we've asked that that be more centrally located on the elevation of the building along 5th and not oriented towards the parking lot. Blank walls, I already mentioned, but on the east and north elevation, that they be compliant, a minimum of 3% windows on the rear facing Portland Avenue South, so that it's not the back of the building necessarily, even though it is the back of the building. And then clear windows must be evenly distributed along the south and east elevations of the building, and no spandrel glass permitted. And then lastly, of course, that no surface parking shall be permitted unless an interim use application is filed and approved by the city. And lastly, the approval on the preliminary and final plat, which has no conditions of approval. So I will close there, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Let's see if we have some questions. Commissioner Gisselman, Cronzer?
Becca, regarding the interim use applications in the parking lots, you addressed this, I guess, specifically, but just for further clarification. So after a maximum of five years, it sounds like, then the applicant would be in a position where they would have to, I think you meant, I think what you said was bring forth new development plans for those parcels. Is that right?
They'll have two options. Either if they have no development plans, they'll have to just continue use of the parking lot, or if they elect to maintain it as a parking lot, they would have to bring forth those very same applications that were part of the last proposal to entitle it legally. So several conditional use permits and several variances, because those parking spaces would be attributed to the office for maybe over the maximum parking requirement, over 20 spaces in the Downtown Parking Overlay District. So they would have to come back to the commission and ask you to approve the permanent establishment of the parking lot.
And within the context of them bringing forth more development plans, if those weren't being approved either by staff or by this group, then during that period of time, it would just continue to be used as a parking lot?
Correct. If they don't submit an application to the city for any additional development on the block, it would be for as long as the City Council. And I say up to five years, it is up to five years. The Zoning and Planning Committee and the City Council could say, well, we're only going to give you two years, and you need to do your best, and then you report back to us. So a period of five years is the maximum. It cannot be extended beyond five, but in theory, the council could incrementally approve it. They could say, we're going to give you two years, and then we'll give you two more, and then we'll give you one. So the council could make it a little bit more challenging for them, and also have a little bit of checks and balances to ensure that they're actually reporting back to them and reporting back to the city about development on the site.
Thanks.
Okay, I have questions from Commissioners Cronzer, then Bender and Slack.
Thank you. Becca, the historic district, is that a locally adopted district?
It is, yes.
Is it? But it's locally only, it's not a national district?
Correct.
Okay. Then on the site plan, I see three area wells that reference garage exhaust. Do you know if those are all exhaust? There's two along 9th, and there's one along, I guess it's the north.
My assumption would be yes, that they would both be exhaust from the underground parking garage.
Okay. There are all three labeled as exhaust. Maybe the applicant can claim.
Yeah, I noticed there were several of them as well, and I just assumed they were kind of forcing it out through multiple points.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bender?
Thank you. I don't know if you know offhand, but I'm interested to know what FAR would be required on the rest of the site in order to meet our minimum FAR requirements if we approve this significantly lower FAR for this portion?
So on this specific parcel, so just on this parcel here, if you were to approve this 80,000-square-foot building, it would be at 1.67, right? And so on the entire block, it's .73. And with 80,000 at 2.0 on this site, it would basically be at, and this is approximation, but 220,000 square feet to meet that 2.0. So in essence, 140,000 square feet additional to meet the minimum FAR.
Okay. And then, just since we've seen this so many times and commented, we had some pretty strong feedback. So we're seeing a very similar design, but only oriented differently on the site. But is there something about orienting it this way that creates easier development potential on the rest of the site than the previous orientation? Or how is this really that different than what we've been seeing over and over again with very little change?
I'm sure the applicant will be looking forward to answering this question. You know, from a design refinement sort of standpoint, the changes, you know, they're a little bit different in terms of window patterns, and they tried to elongate some of the window patterns to be a little bit more vertical in nature, and they took off some of the sort of funkier architectural attributes, I guess you could say, when the building was facing 8th. I mean, more or less, it is the same building. They did put a darker shade of brick, a reddish brick on the building that is also slightly different from what was before, in regard to the actual orientation of the building and the window issues that we've talked about, and those sorts of things. It's essentially the same.
And then just lastly, I noticed in the staff report comments that there was a comment about the number of materials and a suggestion to reduce them, but there isn't a condition of approval related to those materials. So I just wondered if you wanted to comment on that.
We did not, we didn't require a condition that would have lessened it. And I think, honestly, in this specific circumstance, we do think that they complement each other. It would be nice if the palette were simplified. There are the times when we have buildings that come in, and there's just, it's almost egregious when you look at the elevations, and there's just way too many, and it's way too many directions and way too many materials and colors, and it's just too much. And I think in this specific circumstance, when we were weighing compatibility versus number of materials you see most compatible, I also felt that the neighborhood would have a lot of comments about the design, which I think they will this evening. And I thought it might be best not only to read our concern about potentially minimizing that palette, but also maybe to hear from the neighborhood before you made a decision. So I don't think we felt particularly strongly that it had to happen for the building to be approved, but certainly something to take under advisement.
Commissioner Slack?
Becca, this is more of a process question related to the amount of time that's allocated to the interim use of the parking lot. Does this commission have any role in making a recommendation, or can we apply a condition to the site plan review as to the amount of time that that should be?
I think you have, because the application itself is separate, and because the Zoning and Planning Committee and the council are able to make the decision on that, you don't have any authority over that application. So you could probably make some friendly condition that the Planning Commission would suggest it not be longer, but it probably wouldn't have a great deal of weight. I think probably more stating what your feelings or thoughts would be on the record now might be informative for the Zoning and Planning Committee later when they make that. Oftentimes, during the process, especially when it's tied in theory to this land use application, they may ask about what the Planning Commission's perspective was, given that it's separate, but it's integrated. And I think that they would be interested to know if you felt that there should be more incremental time given. But the Zoning and Planning Committee could just take that under advisement and elect to go with five, or they could do shorter if they felt it was appropriate. So ultimately, it's up to them. But if the commission had strong feelings about it, I'm sure there could be some friendly condition of approval that were attached to the approvals.
Any other questions?
I had one question myself. Your recommendations depend fairly heavily on a commitment from the applicant to do better when they develop the rest of the block. What's the form of this commitment? Is it a letter? Is it assurances to you? What do we have?
I don't believe we necessarily have anything in writing. They have made verbal assurances to various folks at the city about their intent and willingness to move forward with development on the proposal. I think while we acknowledge repeatedly that that is key in the approval of this project, what we're also saying is that, given the fact that we have this interim use application, we feel like it's a very strong tool for us to be able to terminate the rights to any long-term parking on the site. So in essence, we feel that by way of the interim use permit application, that the council can be as specific or nonspecific as they want within that five-year timeframe. But when that five-year timeframe's up, it has concluded, and they will have to make a decision. So I don't know if that answers to your satisfaction, but that's...
But don't we already have strong tools to assure that the, this project, if it were to have been developed just on, I think it's Lot 1, would at least meet the minimum FAR? We could certainly look at it that way, that each piece is complying as though what were a separate project?
Correct. I mean, I do acknowledge that, but we, because it's not being applied for as a planned unit development, it gives us less flexibility. You know, there was an application that you saw recently in the warehouse district with the container building that came in that was seeking an FAR variance, and that was part of a planned unit development. So while I mention it in the background, it's not, because of the way that this is structured, and because they're seeking approval literally for one zoning lot and one site plan review that applies to the site, I couldn't make it contingent based on the underlying plating.
And that's your opinion, if one part of the project is... And that's your opinion, if one part of the project is to be lower FAR, this is the better place for it on the block?
The policy guidance for this area does call for a smaller scale building. The downtown east-north loop plan, there's two of them, the Elliott Park neighborhood plan and then also the downtown east-north loop, that calls for a bit higher density on the site. Both were adapted in 2003. All, both plans talk about having higher density development on the north half of the block and lower density on the south. And there's ranges from two to five in Elliott Park and there's a range from one to four in the downtown east. So it's, the scale of development isn't necessarily the concern, it's whether the commission feels that an office use is appropriate here, given that the plans call for residential.
Okay, let's see if there are any other questions. I don't see any. Thank you very much. Standby, I'm sure we'll have more questions as the discussion proceeds. At this point, I would like to open the public hearing and hear first from the applicant or representative. Quite a few issues to address. We're very curious about your reaction to our comments at two different COW meetings.
Good afternoon, my name's Paul Holmes. I'm with Pope Architects and we are working on behalf of Kraus-Andersen and Kraus-Andersen Development on the project. I would say first that Kraus-Andersen's goals and yours are the same with regard to the overall block. Their goal is to develop the block and maximize the density on that block, maximize the development potential that the block has. This project is a necessary first domino in making the rest of that development happen. Kraus-Andersen, as you know, occupies the block. They've been in business on that block since 1944. They desire to stay, they desire to develop a building that is theirs and theirs alone, that is large enough to meet their needs. And they need to build that and then occupy it in order to be able to tear down their existing building and free that portion of the site for future development. The original project that was submitted chose to put the building on what could perhaps be the prime corner of the site at Fifth and Eighth. It is a portion of the site, as Becca pointed out, that is guided for higher-rise development and it is the dominant and most visible corner on the site. The site perhaps that is the easiest development target. And I think that was part of the concern that was expressed to us in the COW meetings was that having Kraus-Andersen's building there was not enough density, particularly on that particular part of the site. So the move to the southern portion of the site at Ninth and Fifth is a response to the master plans that are in place that call for lower-rise development along that Ninth Street corridor and along the Ninth Street Historic District. There were changes that were made to the building design as it was moved to the south. Among them, the deletion of a glass tower that previously was on the southwest corner of the building that would be visible as cars came in on 35W heading north. That tower was taken away and I have some renderings to share with you that weren't part of the packet, so let me put those up. So the glass tower that was in this area has been taken away in favor of these tall windows that are intended to reference the shape and rhythm of the bay windows across the street in the Lenox. The goal in getting this building to blend comfortably in the more historic setting that the Lenox has is to do something that references the Lenox, references the materials and the forms without trying to mimic or imitate the historic form. This is a modern office building, but it needs to live comfortably next to that historic form. Secondly, the brick on the building was re-selected and we went to quite a red brick, again trying to reference the red stone and brick of the Lenox across the street. And the stone material above, and this is cultured stone, is the same color as naturally occurring casota limestone. And so those two materials, we see in a lot of architecture in the period of the Lenox and around town, plain off one another, and that's the case here as well. We needed to cite the building, though, not only for the historic context of the Ninth Street corridor, but also for the broader context of the city against which it plays. And we needed to be responsive to Kraus-Andersen's desires for a building that branded that company as a provider of innovative, leading-edge construction services, but one that had been in business for more than 100 years. So they asked us to do something that would first acknowledge that history. And so brick has always been a part of the building, stone has always been a part of the building, historic materials, punched windows have been part of the building because they're a more historic form. And you can see the classic layout of the building as well with the bottom, the middle and the top of the building. So there is, has always been that reference to historic form and material because Kraus-Andersen has been in business for so long. They also asked us, though, to interweave modern materials and modern forms that would send the message that this company is an innovative, leading-edge provider and is here for the long term. The building reaches up in, at the Fifth and Ninth Street corner. That is a move toward the future and exhibiting Kraus-Andersen's determination and commitment to stay and contribute to the city and to continue to do business here. So all that informed our design and we hope that a good balance is being struck. There are a lot of materials, but we think they work well together. And the materials are there to tell a story and for a reason. The last thing that we were able to do in moving the building, let me reach for a different is in regard to those area wells. There's an area well at the front of the building and at the back of the building. They're about four feet deep. One is intake, the other is exhaust, serving the 48-car parking garage below. I just want to make sure you can hear me. That lets us set the building back from the property line about four feet. The property line in turn is about 12 feet from the Ninth Street curb. And so we have between 16 feet and 17 and a half feet where the building jogs in to do something. And what we're suggesting there is that there can be foundation plantings for four or five feet that reference the plantings in front of the casota, the gardens in front of the casota. But then outboard of that, after we leave an eight-foot pedestrian clear pathway, we can get some deciduous overstory trees along that walkway in tree grates that will enhance the pedestrian experience and also further soften that elevation for people across the street now and in the future as that site is developed. In terms of the conditions that are being imposed on the recommendation for approval, we can agree to nearly all of them. I should tell you that the spandrel glass along Ninth Street was a response to having training rooms on the inside and wanting to use that wall as part of the training. Those can be clear windows. We're glad to make that change. The 25-foot-long wall requirement, there's one on the, sorry, the east elevation here in this area, there's blank wall. That's because there's a locker room in that area or right behind that wall. And so what we've been able to do is to combine these two exit doors into a single exit and use storefront in that material in that location in order to increase the amount of glazing in that wall. And then we proposed to add a high window with translucent glass into that locker room that will daylight that space without causing any privacy concerns. So we can comply there as well. In terms of entry location, the building has always been designed to lead people to the entry on the corner. The sloping face of the front of the building that now faces Fifth has pulled people to that corner. And of course, it also is there because there is visitor parking adjacent to it and it was convenient for the people who would be coming to that building. Our hope in the development of the overall block, and this rendering shows one way that that block may be developed, is that there will be an arrival zone there and it would be a pedestrian space that would also have fountains and plantings and benches and be a space in the middle of the development that helps us get light into the buildings on both sides. But there would be some small amount of visitor parking there that would continue to be used. And that's what's really driven the entry location for the building. So we would request that it stay if possible. In terms of the sign, the Kraus-Andersen shield high on the building, again, this is about that reaching toward the future and wanting Kraus-Andersen's name high on the building in order to send that message. We would prefer it be there. We think it's a good and important message. We can find another way to make that happen if you choose not to allow that. I'm glad to answer other questions you may have as well.
Okay, let's see if there are any other questions at this point. I don't see any. Thank you. Others wishing to speak on this matter, someone from the neighborhood here? From Elliott Park neighborhood? I know you wrote a letter and an earlier letter was a little more favorable than your most current one, so I'm curious about your change in stance.
Thank you. I'm Jerry Dustard. I'm a resident of Elliott Park and I live in the property referred to as Grant Park. And I am on the task force that began to evaluate these plans after we learned that there had been some changes and that we were concerned about the degree of the changes that we were expecting. We've had several meetings with Kraus-Andersen staff and their architects and they are receptive to the idea that we want to try to make the building look a little more fitting in to the neighborhood. But we haven't seen any real movement in that area except the mention of a red brick, which I just looked at out in the parking lot and it's frankly kind of brown. But the point is that that is the only, from my perspective, the only movement toward acknowledging the red brick in the buildings across the street. So we'd just like to see a little more evidence that they would, and they have said they would be willing to work with us. I'm not sure what that means, but we'd like to see some evidence that they would be willing to work with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? None? Others wishing to speak? Please come on up, give your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Albert Yonas and I live in Elliott Park in the same building as Jerry in Grant Park. And I think the building gives me a sense of conflict between the architecture, the historic architecture of the neighborhood and this new building. It doesn't seem to me to fit in well with the surround. In the pictures that I've seen, it looks like it really fits in with the buildings behind. The light stone of this building and the light stone of the hypothetical buildings to be built behind it really creates a very pleasant impression. But they're not there and we don't know if they're going to show up there. And what's going to happen here is something that I think will give an unpleasant experience and a sense of disruption of the neighborhood.
Thank you very much. No questions. Anyone else wishing to speak? Come on up, give your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Brian Nassy at 1617 Elliott Avenue South. I'm on the task force as well as the EPNI board. You know, and I guess I would reference back to the gentleman who just spoke. Given the location of the building, it's really trying, from my perspective, it needs to try to satisfy two audiences. One, the reach for downtown and understandably so, and the other, the relationship between the building and the historic buildings across the street. And I think that when the time came to pivot the building from the previous proposed location to the new one, they just didn't have time to work out the elements in a way that would, I think, satisfy both the downtown need and feel with, and the historic district need and feel. I know what the applicant wants to move forward with the project and time is of the essence, but I think this needs to go back to the drawing board so that some of those issues can be worked out outside the scope of, we got to have an answer today or we don't have time to make that adjustment that might be a good idea, but it doesn't fit into our timeframe. So that's all I had. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any questions. Others wishing to speak? Please come on up, give your name and address for the record. Anyone else?
Good afternoon, my name is Howard Young. I'm a resident of Elliott Park. I serve on the board.
Your address? Your address?
603 South Ninth Street.
Thank you.
Kitty corner from the property. Actually, right on this corner here. I have shared many of the concerns here as the other folks who have spoken. One of the concerns that I have that's a little bit off is the fact of the history and what Elliott Park really is. There are very few places that have the character that Elliott Park has. And I think it's something that Elliott Park has to cherish and be respected. That is part of this Ninth Street Historic District is a corridor to define the, it is defined by the four-story residential character of Ninth Street. And it was designated within the master plan, which was prepared by Elliott Park and worked with the city and approved by the city as a residential corridor that follows straight up Ninth Street. And at this point in time, we're being, we're looking at a building that is commercial and it doesn't seem to have much concern regarding the residential corridor. They did move the building to this Ninth Street base because that would allow them to work with the residential corridor, height concern of about four feet, four stories, as other buildings within that historic corridor. So there seems to be a little bit of confusion regarding the four-foot height issue, which was why the building was moved to Ninth Street. I think that is about the main points I wanted to make. One of the negotiations that we have had so far with Kraus-Andersen's architect is the opportunity here to begin looking at some of the, to try and bring back some feeling of the respect for the residential structure and the commercial structure of Elliott Park. Four stories, usually brick with a verticality essence to them. And that's what we are seeing, what we had asked for here, to take that red brick, bring it up and give it the verticality, which all these older structures really worked with. And that began to appear by raising that red surface up to that height and giving that at least some sense of, okay, we're thinking about this. I don't know that it's a solution, but those are some of the thoughts that we have been going over. And are there any questions regarding those kinds of things?
Let's see if there are any questions. I don't see any. Thank you very much for your thoughts. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? We've heard a good deal about the character of the neighborhood and how this building fits or does not fit. Come on up, give your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Millie Schaefer. I live at 1515 Elliott Avenue and am part of the task force of EPNI that has been looking at the design of this building. Some of the things with this building do address some of our master plan ideas in that it's a similar height to things across the street. However, many of the features don't exactly fit with the South Ninth Street corridor. And we keep looking at the design and trying to think of how we could tweak that a little bit. The one idea that Howard mentioned just came up in our board meeting last night as we were looking at the newer drawings of possibly raising the bricks higher on one corner and Kraus-Andersen hasn't, we haven't discussed that idea with them yet. So the other thing we thought about is the back door or the east door. I'm thinking of driving Ninth Street toward downtown, which I do all the time, in that we don't want the east side of the building to If something could be done with that door so that it looks like a second entrance door. I don't know exactly, you know, how that would be done, but something that makes it look more inviting on that east side. So those are just a couple of the ideas. I think the neighborhood definitely wants to work with Kraus Andersen, and I think we can come to some conclusion with that. Thank you.
Okay, let's see if there are any questions. I actually did have a question myself. One of the major concerns here is the requested variance for the floor area ratio, which calls for more density rather than less. Is that something that your task force dealt with?
The, I'm saying, say that again, the floor ratio?
Floor area ratio, asking that the amount of building space put on that block be greater than is proposed.
I don't, I don't think we've addressed that, really. I think, I don't have any personal opposition to the size of this building. More, it would be more facade concerns.
Okay.
And we also like the idea of the green space at the corner of Ninth and Portland.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Now is your time. Come on up, give your name and address, please. New information, if you have it, would be appreciated.
My name is Kim Voss. I'm a consultant hired by Elliott Park Neighborhood, Inc. to review this Kraus Andersen proposal. And I'll summarize some of the things, I think, and talk about our specific position as well. Coincidentally, I was also the executive director of Elliott Park Neighborhood, Inc. in the late eighties and early nineties, so I have a little perspective. You know, we've had quite a process of meeting with Kraus Andersen about this in the neighborhood. We've had seven meetings that have either involved staff, our Blue Committee, or task force members, and I think other people have said this too, and you've experienced this, we've had a very difficult time getting any compromise. You know, the new location of the building is a dramatically different location for us in terms of the neighborhood. Over on Eighth Street, a good part of the Elliott Park neighborhood is really downtown. EPNI has recognized that, historically recognizes it today. And we recognize that buildings proposed in that area may not meet the residential character, may not have a neighborhood feel. That boundary is kind of the line in between Eighth and Ninth Street. So when you move from being on Eighth Street, we look at it as downtown. You asked about the far ratio. Over there, I think we're certainly in agreement with the staff position that, where we understand it, that, you know, we're on a bigger far over on Eighth Street. I don't think EPNI would never, ever say, build it higher, but we accept that buildings will be higher, and we have accepted buildings higher over in that part of the neighborhood. However, when you move to Ninth Street, it's a very different matter. This building is right across the street from the last building in the South Ninth Street Historic District that continues to the east down Ninth Street. And in the next block, the buildings on both sides of the block are in the historic district. And as you go south down Portland from Ninth, there are also buildings in the historic district. Altogether, there are 20 buildings in the historic district, most of them within a block and a half of this proposal. So when you talk about the neighborhood character and how this doesn't fit in, you need to understand that context. So a lot of people were much more concerned when this was moved over to Ninth Street, kind of at the last minute, before we even, I think, had put a, you know, a concept approval letter. Now we've sent a letter just asking for denial of the proposal. Now, we met, we've been trying to meet with Kraus Andersen. They've been there a long time. We know each other. We've coexisted in the neighborhood for a long time. We wanted to try and work something out with them, but as I said, that's been difficult. The last attempt at that was last night, when the EPNI Board of Directors met, Kraus Andersen came and talked about some of their things. We were a little disappointed that still compromises weren't offered, but more different views or emphasis that they felt we had missed on what was already changed. So the only changes we've seen is the change about the glass tower and the red brick. So we had, and there's just been a lot more concern in the neighborhood in general about the proposal over here. And people have been contacting the City Council Members' Office, people have been contacting the CPED staff, and people have been talking to us, people have been organizing and talking to other people. So it really feels kind of like a violation of the character. So what we did come up with last night, and I'm going to pass this out. I'll pass this out as a reference to it. I think Becca will help me with this. So when the board met last night, they still, you know, felt like we should offer some position of what we wanted to see here. That was kind of our last, last offer. We're offering it here to the Planning Commission because, as I said, we haven't had good luck in compromises with Kraus Andersen. So this is what we came up with, and it's being passed out there. Now wait till it makes its way around. So I'll read, I'll read the position first. I'll reference Howard's. Howard, by the way, is an architect. He didn't say that. Howard, you know, came up with this drawing that illustrates it very well. That's not what you have. I said in the meeting last, met, we met last night, and that's what they presented. Howard came up with this today, so I'm going to reference that as I, as I talk through what our position is. So we are still opposed, but we're willing to have a conditional acceptance of this proposal if Kraus Andersen will commit to the following conditions, and we have those in blue on the handout. And it shows right here, the first one, in the southeast corner, that's what we're talking about right here. You can see the difference between what's on the screen and what you have. So what we're saying, we want this red brick, the reason we're, we are, we like the red brick is, I will show you this, it's not going to show up too well here, it's just too small. I think this is from the Kraus Andersen application. This, okay? Somebody knows how to run this machine. That's good, it's not me. You can see, here's the new building, here's the Lenox across the street. And there are points where the buildings are right across the street for each other, from each other. The Lenox is part of the historic district. It's been beautifully revitalized into condominiums, so owners live there. And that's the view we have. I hope that illustrates kind of the contrast we're talking about. So, you know, we've suggested, again, I'll go back to this, that in this corner of the building, right here, we have the red, we have red brick that will match the brick across the street at the Lenox. And, you know, the board felt that that would help a lot. The other thing, that's one, okay. Next point, the east doorway. Somebody else referred to this. You can see it here. We feel like we're at the back door, the door where deliveries are made, the trash gets hauled out. We'd like to have some more character to that door to make it attractive, have glass or an awning or something that, so it doesn't look like the back door. Thirdly, you can see back to the Lenox. You probably can't see it here, but right here, in front of the Lenox, there's, you know, it's just a basic wrought iron fence. We think that a similar fence across the street would kind of, you know, reflect that historic character. And so we've asked for iron fencing similar to the Lenox to go all along Ninth Street and then halfway up the block on Portland. And then we've asked for more trees along Ninth Street, and this is something discussed last night. I think Kraus Andersen is already willing to do this in front of the building and along the east side as well. We're talking about here where the building side is kind of exposed. Those are the four things that we've said our conditional acceptance would be, you know, based upon. Then we're hoping that the Planning Commission can incorporate that into your approval. I will refer to the last paragraph here to bring some, you know, a lot of this is feelings about from the neighborhood. I know you need something to tie it to. In the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth, we refer to 1.15, which states that ensure that land use regulation continue to promote development as compatible with nearby properties, neighborhood character, and natural fields, features. We feel the building proposed is not compatible. We can accept it if they can make these compromises, which I think are not grandiose in nature, I think are affordable and within the scope of Kraus Andersen to perform. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't see any questions. I will close the public hearing unless there's new information beyond the character of the building and the site plan review questions. Anyone else with new information about the other applications? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Thank you very much. We have four applications to deal with. Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move that we continue this Item 1 cycle, and I'd be happy to speak to why.
Let's see if we can get a second on that. Moved and seconded to continue.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think, you know, we've seen this several times, and there's been some, some movement on the plans, but I really don't see a lot of responsiveness yet to the Planning Commission's concerns. And I do think we have folks that have some good ideas about how to make sure this building, if it goes in, would be more in keeping with our adopted policies. The part that concerns me the most is that, you know, that we're really relying on hope here that the whole site is consistent with our policies. The staff report, of course, says staff would not support the permanent use of the remainder of the block for surface parking as it would conflict with all applicable adopted city policies. And so I think we have to at least make sure this portion is more consistent with what we have adopted in our small area plan, in the comprehensive plan. So I hope that folks can get together, that the applicant can get together with staff and keep this moving closer to what the plans call for in this area.
Commissioner Bender, staff informs me that just one cycle would not be enough for them to react and suggest this be continued to the meeting of November 18th. Is that correct?
Happily so. I'm in my motion.
And that could possibly give us another chance to react and commit to the whole. We are doing our best to, to work with you and, but at the same time, create a, an urban street front that is worthy of our downtown. So, any other comments on the motion to continue to November 18th? I don't see any. Clerk, please call a roll on that.
Bender? Brown? Gusselman? Dipke here? Slack? That's 5-0.
Okay, that will be continued to the meeting of November 18th. Thank you very much. I hope applicants have been taking notes carefully, and we'll look forward to talking with you some more. That concludes item number five. We move on to item number six, mailing Anderson as staff. This is a hotel and suite in Prospect Park.
Good evening.
Yeah, good evening.
Daniel Pellon, on behalf of Dave and Jeff Barnhart, have submitted land use applications to allow a new five-story hotel with 117 rooms. The site is currently located in the C2 Neighborhood Corridor Commercial District and is located in the PO Pedestrian Oriented Overly District and UA University Area Overly District. The applications required for this project are petition to rezone the property from the C2 to the C3A District, conditional use permit to increase the maximum allowed height from four stories, 56 feet, to five stories, 64 feet and 8 inches, and also six variances. One is to reduce the west interior side yard setback from 13 feet to 7 feet 8 inches. A variance to reduce the minimum loading requirement from 2 to 1 large loading space and to increase the maximum allowed building setback along Williams Avenue Southeast from 8 feet to 46 feet in the PO District. A variance to increase the maximum allowed parking lot furniture from 60 feet to 112 feet along Williams Avenue. To reduce the minimum window requirement from 40% to 10% on the ground floor elevation facing Williams Avenue. To increase the maximum area of a projecting sign from 48 square feet to 87 and 1/2 square feet, as well as site plan review. This item was continued from the September 29th Planning Commission meeting because staff identified the additional variance of the window requirement from, reducing the window requirement from 40% to 10%. The site is located on University Avenue Southeast, which is a commercial corridor, and it's approximately 300 feet from the Prospect Park Station on the Metro Green Line, which is on the intersection of 29th Avenue. The site currently contains a partially demolished building that was consumed by a fire in August of 2013. The south side of the site is also bounded by a public street, which is Williams Avenue Southeast, and that's, that runs along the R4 District, so the site has two building frontages. There are two two-story office buildings on either side of the property and along University, and the surrounding area generally contains commercial buildings and multiple family residential buildings. As I mentioned, the hotel would contain 117 rooms, and the applicant is also proposing a 37-space surface parking lot to the east of the building. I wanted to mention one thing. Along Williams, which is the south side of the building, this is about 10 feet above grade compared to the rest of the site. I won't go through all of the findings for each application, those are found on pages three through 13 of the staff report. I did want to discuss the sign, the projecting sign variance, as that is the one that staff is not recommending approval for. So the, the sign would be located on the University Avenue frontage, which is allowed to have 193 and 1/2 square feet of total sign area. Currently, they're also projecting, I'm sorry, proposing an attached sign along the canopy on University. And the variance is required for this projecting sign, which would be located here on the facade. The, the sign itself is 3 and 1/2 square feet wide by 25 feet tall. It's located 50 feet 8 inches above grade. It would be internally lit, and the letters would be red to match the building. Currently, this, the applicant is allowed to have signage on three sides of the building, so both the Williams Avenue side as well as the University and the side of the building facing the onsite parking. So the variance is to increase the allowed sign, projecting sign from 48 square feet to 87 and 1/2 square feet. In order to grant a variance, the Planning Commission needs to make findings for, for the variance, which include that practical difficulty... variance, which include that practical difficulties exist with ordinance because of circumstances unique to the property, and those circumstances can't be created by the applicant. Staff finds that a practical difficulty does not exist in meeting the maximum size allocation for a projecting sign. The circumstances of the variance to increase the proposed projecting signs area in order to accommodate the full name of the hotel at a large scale are not unique to the parcel, and they have been created by the applicant. The second finding is whether the applicant is using the property in a reasonable manner. And staff finds that a projecting sign, 48 square feet on each side, that would be allowed by ordinance, would allow for effective identification. And the third, the third finding is that the proposed variance would not alter the essential character of the locality or be injurious to the use or enjoyment of other property in the vicinity. Staff finds that allowing a projecting sign to exceed the ordinance by 39 and a half square feet would diminish the pedestrian experience, which is very important in the PO Pedestrian Overlay District. And there are two other signed findings as outlined in the staff report. As I mentioned, site plan review is also required for this project. The applicant is requesting alternative compliance for seven items. Staff is recommending approval for five of the seven and is requiring that the applicant provide two additional onsite canopy trees for a total of five, and then additional landscaping just to meet the canopy tree requirement within the surface parking area. Staff has received three comments on the project so far, which have been included in your packets tonight. Two of the comments express opposition for the project. Generally, they're opposed to the hotel use and would like to preserve the pedestrian nature of the, of the block. The neighborhood supports the variances for the parking lot frontage, parking, projecting sign area, window variance, as well as the CUP to increase the building's height, and has provided no comment on the west and south building setback variances or for the loading space variance. I'm here to help answer any questions you might have.
Let's see if there are any questions at this point. I don't see any. Thank you very much. At this point, I will open the public hearing. I would like to hear from the applicant first, if you have comments.
Hello, I'm Jeff Barnhart. I'm Dave Barnhart's son, who owns commercial real estate. He's owned 2812 since 1972, and he's been a part of the neighborhood committee period for over 30 years, I believe, and we're honored to be in this area. And like all the processes in the past, we've had to come before you guys. We really try hard to get the neighborhood support. And so I have two members from the neighborhood here today, Florence Lippman and Richard Gilliard, to address the sign variance that were requested. And also I have Dan Pellon, who's going to speak on the specifics of that. But I wanted to introduce myself, and thank you, guys. It's been a pleasant process, and Mailing has done great. Thank you.
Okay, were any questions? I don't see any. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Dan Pellon with Tushy Montgomery Architects out of Richfield, Minnesota. We've been working with the Barnharts on this property, on the hotel, and we've been working with staff on the whole development in Peria, which has been going very good. There is a very involved neighborhood, as you know, probably know, and so we've had a lot of meetings with them. I guess I'd like to address the signage issue on the, on the projecting sign from 48 square feet to 87 square feet, I believe. The, I think the spirit of the ordinance is actually to make sure that we don't have sign clutter, wants to reduce sign clutter. They want to make sure that the signage, even some of the findings say that the, that the additional variance won't increase the sign clutter. As Mailing has pointed out, we could actually have signage on three sides, Williams Avenue, University Avenue, and towards the parking lot. Obviously, there's no need for us to have any signage on Williams Avenue. It faces a residential area. There's no commercial area down there. The signage, the signage allowed on, on the east, on the east side of the building towards the parking lot would be, would be 270 square feet, a quite large sign. The largest sign you can have in any one sign is 180 square feet, so there actually could be multiple signs on the east side of that parking lot. And I think one of the, one of the objections was that they didn't want, they didn't want, one of the objections of one of the neighborhoods, neighbors, was that they didn't want signage, you know, flashing in their, their side windows. They're in the kind of building two lots away. And so I guess what we were looking at is that the projecting sign is, is actually, is actually being done to, to have visibility from the light rail station and also to have visibility from the west side of, the west side of University Avenue. This is sort of a peculiar part of the ordinance where there is no, no limit to the sign height in this area on, in a C3A, which most, most areas do have a sign height, as we saw at the last proposal. And when we first, when we first came to Peria, we actually had this sign at the top of the building and the sign at the, on the canopy. Peria actually, you know, thought that the blade sign over here would actually be better than the, the higher sign. And as, as a business function, it probably, it probably would be. The other peculiar thing, you know, the, the side, the side, the side facing east towards the apartment building or towards the light rail could actually have two signs on here that equal 270 square feet. So I think that, you know, we need to have the visibility from, from that side, and I think that, you know, the, the blade sign, we could actually put the blade sign, that same-sized blade sign, or even larger, on the, on the east side of the building. So I think that we've addressed sign clutter in the neighborhood. I understand that, you know, increasing it from 48 square feet to the proposed 80, 88 square feet, I know it's almost, almost double, but I think in the spirit of the ordinance and for the neighborhood, it's less signage than what could actually be applied to this building. So I guess that's all I wanted to talk to you about on that.
Okay, thank you. We have a question from Commissioner Lipke here.
I mean, I just wondered really briefly, if you could just address the materials of the building?
The materials of the building is, we have two stories of brick all the way around the base of the building on all, all four sides, and then we have a brick coming up to the, to the front of the area, front of the area there, and that, that, that brick goes up to the thing, and then the rest of it is stucco.
Stucco or stucco panel?
Stucco, real stucco.
Other questions? I don't see any. Thank you very much. I'll continue the public hearing. Others wishing to speak? Come on up, give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Richard Gilliard. I live at 194 Malcolm Avenue Southeast. Thank you to you, President Tucker, and members of the commission for hearing my comment on only the sign. I'll try to be brief. I'm a member of the Prospect Park Neighborhood Board. I'm a member of the Zoning and Project Review Committee. I've been on the task force that has been working on this project, and I'm also a principal in Prospect Park 2020, which is a neighborhood community development corporation that for the past four or five years has been working on the reimagining of University Avenue and the redevelopment as a high-density, high-intensity, commercial avenue, where it's a mix of housing, residential, housing, commercial, office, retail, and the arts. And that vision also goes north from University Avenue to the railroad yards, and there are several projects that have come forward, and we've recruited to the area, including Surly and the Cornerstone Project and United Properties. But the Barnhart property on the south side of the avenue is the first building that's going to be directly on University Avenue. We, we've worked closely, as the architect and Jeff have indicated, we've worked closely over the past several months trying to make this the best possible building it can be. We've succeeded, I think, in many ways. There's much more glass on the avenue. We've reorganized the interior somewhat to make the interior spaces, the meeting rooms, the cafeteria area, all more accessible, and lights and life on the street. And we've, we think dialed this up to the best possible building it can be within the constraints of the budget. We're happy to have this on the avenue as one of the first things, showing this, this new vision for the avenue. When the project came to us, as the architect indicated, the signing that we saw, we thought was wimpy, technical term, and too much of it. So we said, let's have a single-blade sign that you can really read as you're coming down the avenue. University is very, very wide. It's got light rail in the middle. The traffic is intense, and by that I don't mean it's, there's just a lot going on on University Avenue. So we felt that a blade sign that you could read at a distance, had color to it, had life, was readable, added to the texture. When we bring all of the buildings to the property line, which we want to do, we get, when you're coming down the avenue, you get kind of a flatness, and a sign that's just projecting three feet, six inches, we think adds to the texture, adds to the color, and adds to the life of the avenue. So we recommended this sign, and we would support it today. I don't like it in white, by the way, so we'll have to, we'll have to deal with that if the, if the commission approves a, the size of, but we think the scale is appropriate, and we would urge your consideration of the scale assigned for this avenue on this building. All of the building, the building that you see next to it in the photograph, almost all of the other buildings on that side of the avenue are going to disappear and be redeveloped as buildings much more of the scale of the building that's being shown by the Barnharts. So again, thank you, and we hope you'll reconsider this and approve the larger sign. Thanks.
Okay, let's see if there are any questions. I don't see any. Thank you very much. Others wishing to speak? Your name and address for the record.
My name is Florence Lippman. I live at 76 Clarence Avenue Southeast. I'm on the board of the Prospect Park and East River Improvement Association for I can't tell you how many years, and I'm also a member of the zoning committee. I'm here to support everything that was said regarding the sign, and this is one of our great success stories. We've worked with the Barnharts on a number of, of properties. Actually, I've known Dane Barnhart before, well, before his son was born, certainly, about 40 years now on various items, and now this is a big project that's being done. To me, it makes a lot of sense. We're really getting rid of, or making something looks a lot better. When you, when you cross over there, and the train is there, the train turns right there, and there's a lot of traffic around, something that's on the building, you won't even see. That sign will be seen. They do need some visibility, and the pedestrians will have a better chance of seeing it also. Certainly, the signage is less than what's allowed, what's allowed, and we are the ones that suggested it. We are the people who have to look at it. So I think the consideration should really be paid to the people, people who have to look at it, and the people are willing to do it. So I think this is a situation that really should be supported, and I hope we have your support in this variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, any questions? I don't see any. Anyone else wishing to speak on item number six? Anyone else? If not, I will close the public hearing. Commissioner Lipke here.
I have questions for staff.
Okay.
Mailing, I have two questions. And one is in response to item F, which is the variance regarding the length of the parking. I just wanted to quick ask if the reason for approval was just because it's, the elevation shift, it makes it 10 feet below the pedestrian level, so it wouldn't be visible, or is there a different line of reasoning for the support of that variance?
Yes, and I think staff also feels that they've been able to mitigate, so along Williams Avenue, there's also going to be a lot of landscaping and a fence and screening, so you won't be able to see it from Williams Avenue, and they've done a lot to mitigate it, whereas pretty crucial along University.
My second question is just in regard to the signage. The architect had a visual up that showed a sign on the east wall, as well as one on the front. Would both of those have been allowed, or is it one or the other, or both together, or?
They could still apply for those. They're not proposed at this time, but they can apply up to the maximum sign allocation on that building wall.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Gisselman?
So, Mailing, regarding, regarding the question that Ms. Lipke here just asked, then if we, if we approved a variance for the projecting sign, then would we also have the authority then to limit their ability to apply for the other signage?
I'd like to defer to Hillary about this.
I had a feeling that was the question you were going to ask. I think as a, since it is a variance and it is of the size, I think you technically could limit the amount of signage on that building wall. If we had a city attorney here tonight, I would welcome his opinion, but I, I think that you, because it is a variance request, I think you could limit the signage to what's, what's allowed, or what they're proposing, excuse me.
And, and give up the right for the square footage on the east side?
It, it wouldn't be unlike other applications or other variances that we've had, where we've put conditions on that where we've required, it's, it's, if the applicant changes their mind and wants more signage in the future, we have had applications come back to this commission to remove conditions or apply for new variance to, to alter the condition.
But for instance, we could say that we approve the largest blade sign in lieu of signage proposed for the east, east side?
Correct. I mean, if you were to choose, you will need findings if you choose to overturn staff recommendation, and you, you could use justification that there isn't signage on the other two elevations, that they are under their total sign allocation along University, things like that. So it could be a rationale for why you are approving a larger sign, because they don't have sign clutter on the other elevations.
Okay, well, let's think that over. Should we get some motions here on the zoning and the other variances and CUP? Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Just a question about the sign. Is the sign lighted? Is it lit up?
According to the applicant, it is internally lit. I haven't had them fully verify that it's not backlit, so I might defer to the applicant if they have more.
And I guess I could just register my concern that if the building in the foreground was redeveloped as residential, for example, my question was, the reason I asked the question is, is because I'm, I'm interested in the impacts on future redevelopment in this area.
Yes, and I mean, staff does feel that it could have an impact on the residential buildings that are there now and in the future.
Hillary?
Just to clarify, for the sign that you do see, the, the white part of the sign cannot be illuminated. It cannot glow. That would be backlit, which is prohibited in the pedestrian-oriented overlay district. So only at night, when lit, only the letters could shine through that cabinet.
Okay, Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll start things off with a motion, and I will move that we approve item 6A, the rezoning from C2 to C3A.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, call a roll on that, please.
Slack? Slack? Lipke here? Gisselman? Brown? Bender? Five zero.
Okay, anyone continue?
Yes, and next I will move approval of item 6B, the conditional use permit, and also C, D, E, F, and G.
And G.
Those, those variances.
Okay. Moved and seconded, approve B, C, D, E, F, and G. Is there any discussion? Okay, I don't see any. Please call a roll on those applications.
Bender? Brown? Gisselman? Lipke here? Slack? Five zero.
Okay, those are approved on each.
And I'll move on to variance H, that is the variance for the area of the projecting sign, and I'll move that we approve that variance.
Okay, if we get a second, I'll ask for some findings. Is there a second on that? Okay, moved and seconded.
I think in this instance, since the property is signage be placed on the east wall of the building. And I'd, I'd also like to make the finding that because there could potentially be a little bit less wall signage on the building, that the size of the projecting sign is, is appropriate and reasonable.
Okay, let's deal with the condition that you're suggesting. Is there a second on, on that? Okay, moved in seconded, no additional signage on the east wall. Did you want to discuss that? Commissioner Lipkeep here.
Yes, I actually wanted to say that I agree with Commissioner Brown, but also wanted to perhaps add to that condition, that no additional signage on the north wall, either with the exception of the signage proposed above the canopy as well, since the case was made that both of those signs would be allowed, but instead of that, they're doing this one bigger blade sign.
So, the essence of this is the larger blade sign in lieu of more signage on the north and east facades?
The signage that's currently proposed, as we see it, on the canopy and the blade, is the total amount of signage allowed on the, you know, for the north and east facades, period.
Okay. Commissioner Brown, is that acceptable? Okay, I think we'll, we'll just informally say that the motion has changed to exclude more signage on east and north side, but allow the larger blade. Any other discussion? If not, clerk, please call a roll on H with the one condition.
Bender, Brown, Gisselman, Lipkeep here, Slack, 5-0.
Okay, are you going to want more findings on that? Okay, thank you very much. And finally, the site plan review. Commissioner Brown?
And on item I, the site plan review, I will move approval with the five stated conditions.
Okay, is that a second? Moved in seconded, discussion on item I. I don't see any. Please call a roll on I, the site plan review.
Slack, Lipkeep here, Gisselman, Brown, Bender, 5-0.
Okay, that is approved, and that concludes item six and in business for today. Hillary, any announcements to make?
No.
No, we have a COW meeting on Thursday, joint with the HP, no, it's not joint, it's just, just our regular COW meeting. Okay, and there'll be an executive meeting before that. Thank you very much for joining us today. We are adjourned until our next meeting, October 27th.